Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Town of Hilton Head Gulligichi Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force Special Meeting. This is August the 6th, 2020. And this meeting is being conducted virtually in accordance with the Town Council Emergency Ordinance 2020-13 and can be viewed live on the Town's public meeting Facebook page at facebook.com/TownOfHiltonHeadIslandMeetings. There will be a recording of the meeting at the Town's website, I am officially calling this meeting to order. Sharice, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, we are.
Okay, Sharice, would you please call the rolls?
Mr. Stevens.
Present.
Ms. McBiddy. Ms. Wright.
Present.
Mr. Malik.
Present.
Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis.
Is muted.
Mr. Simmons. Ms. Green. Ms. White. And Mr. Theodore.
Okay, so as of right now, we do not have a quorum?
No doubt. We have four members present.
Okay, hopefully someone else will join us. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that the agenda is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Is there a second?
No, second.
We are unable to approve the agenda at this time. We don't have enough for our votes.
Okay.
We'll just move forward to the discussion.
Okay. Next, I have the citizen comments. Sharice?
Yes, the public comments concerning the agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the Town's open town hall portal. The portal closed at noon Wednesday, August 5th, 2020, prior to the scheduled meeting. Comments for today's meeting were provided by Ibrahim Abdul Malik and were provided to the task force for review and made a part of the official record. Citizens were provided the option to sign up for public comment participation by phone during the meeting. The public comment period closed at noon on Wednesday, August 5th, 2020, prior to the scheduled meeting. There were no requests from citizens to participate by phone.
Okay. We will move into old business, Historic Neighborhoods Overlay District LMO amendments. And you see, we have a staff response to the questions and feedback from our previous meeting, which was a lot of questions and a lot of feedback. So Sharice, I will turn that back over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I hope everyone is well today. At the last task force meeting, staff presented a draft of the Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District. The task force worked hard to review the draft and responded at the meeting with comments and questions and feedback. So again, thank you to the task force for the work that you put into providing these comments. Staff review the comments and will provide questions or clarification based on the comments we receive. Before I address the feedback that was provided at the last meeting, I would like to begin by highlighting the overlay recommendations that were provided in the consultant report. The purpose of this district is to preserve the cultural integrity and historic integrity of this district, of this historic area. Also, while providing opportunities for landowners to build on the land. It is recommended that the development standards focus on trying to increase densities, create buffers and reductions in buffers and setbacks, and reductions in feet for access to allow for more buildable space on the property. It also calls for the retaining of traditions where both families are able to live together in the communal spaces. So staff focused on these strategies that were made in the report. And thanks to the feedback that was provided by the task force, we're going to look again more closely at these areas to make sure that we can best come out with the best strategy that we can for this district. This is extensive work and it takes a lot of time because we're simultaneously working on different areas in the LMO. Also, we want to make sure that we are taking everything into consideration. This work was also identified as being very urgent. And staff agrees with this. This is a long time coming. So it is that it's work that we're committing, we're committed to doing. And we need your help in trying to move it forward. Therefore, it's important that we make sure that we're focused on everything that's concerning with the strategies for this overlay district that we can agree on and we can move forward. So I will go into comments right now. A comment that was brought up in the last meeting. Will the historic overlay overlap with the corridor overlay district, the address? Both the historic overlay and the corridor overlay will apply to those areas outlined. The corridor overlay does not apply to single-family development, but it does apply to other development and must meet the design guidelines. Amending the design guide is a future project and that's recommendation taken now. And it's not identified as top priority and is not a part of the overlay district. But this is something that we will be looking at in the future. The overlay district is, the next comment is the overlay district is missing flexibility. There should be a sliding scale for properties within the overlay district. Staff is unable to review properties on a sliding scale. You cannot hold one property owner to written regulations and another property owner to no written regulations. However, what staff will do is we're looking to apply flexibilities and buffers, setbacks, and access for minor materials, access easements, and adjacent properties as we're moving this forward. There was also a question about how the overlay district adjusts its conforming uses. Non-conforming properties can be brought to conforming with the overlay. Properties that are non-conforming and still non-conforming with the overlay will still remain as non-conforming. However, they will not be allowed to increase in the non-conformity once the overlay is being put in place. So for example, if your property has six units and is non-conforming under the current LMO, but the overlay district allows for eight units, you will be allowed to build those two additional units. You wouldn't be able to build more than that, though. So you would be allowed the two additional units under the new guidelines. The next question was, do homes in a family compound refer to construction or placement? Staff is looking at the language for that family compound section and will make sure to include both language in terms of construction and placement. Another question was, why was there a five-year hold on selling property? Please understand, the proposed regulation was that you could sell or rent to people within the same family and not outside the family for the period of five years. This hold was put in place originally for the preservation purposes. The five-year hold is also in the report recommendations and is a part of Beaufort County Regulations for Family Compound. However, staff is willing to remove this language based on the input that was given last time we met. There was a request for the RM6 district to be a mixed-use district instead. Now, from a planning standpoint, mixed use refers to a district that contains both residential and commercial uses on the same property. From a cultural standpoint, when we're looking historically, it's the ability to be able to work and to live on the same property as it's been done in the past. There's a question that we received that refers to the cultural definition of mixed use. Staff is looking into including a section for home occupation that would maintain the tradition of working and living in the same space. And as well as looking at ways those places can be advertised. So what we would be looking for here is what we should consider when drafting this portion of the regulation. The RM6 district will remain for the purposes of increasing density, as asked again in the report recommendations. That is something that it was looking to focus on, making sure that we have more room to increase density. And the question, can the HNPO be the official to relieve anxiety and create flexibility? I will continue to work with property owners as requested. I am always available to answer any questions. However, I'm going to turn this part over to Terri Lewis so she can explain the role of the LMO official.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is Terri Lewis. And I am the LMO official for the Town of Hilton Head Island. And so as that, throughout the LMO, there are several portions where it talks about things being handled by the LMO official. Its interpretations, its determinations, its review of development plan reviews, subdivisions, things like that. And so while I am the official and that is my responsibility, there are also some of those things that are delegated to other members of staff to review. So like Sharice said, she would continue to work with property owners that came to her. She would also work with other members of our staff along with those property owners to go through those potential projects and work the best they can to come up with a design or to work with us through interpretations or determinations that would work best for everybody. We try to be as flexible as we can within the code. And we would certainly do that through these amendments that have been drafted as well.
Thank you, Terri. So the next question is to provide an example of where and what LMO changes would benefit. Staff will have those examples at the next meeting when we discuss those LMO revisions based on your input. And there's another question of how the plans will be expedited. How it's written is that the historic district will have those plans processed first. But I want to turn it over once again to Terri. If you can explain what the process is once the development plan meets the office and try to provide clarification for that section.
Absolutely. So when a plan comes in, we have a certain amount of time to review it. So we review it with our staff team and then those comments, we provide a set of comments to the applicant for them to resolve. And when those comments come back, then we will, when the revised plans come back, then we will go through the comments and look at those plans. And if we're able to then, we would issue the approval. If not, we would work with the applicant to get them to a point where we could approve it. Typically, depending on the project, the most we have right now is 10 days for review. And when it comes back for a re-review, it's five days. There are other projects where it's just a five-day staff review and then we turn comments back over. So I know there's some confusion because the language in the amendment states 60 days. That comes from state code. That just means it keeps staff from sitting on something for 60 days and not doing anything about it. So basically, if we get a plan in or a project and we do nothing with it for 60 days, it would automatically be approved. But we don't work that way. We try to review things as quickly as possible and to get comments back to applicants as quickly as possible to move them along in the process.
Thank you. And the final question or comment, should there be buffers and setbacks between adjacent properties with their family members? Then as we're going through the documentation, we're going to be looking at where we can make sure that between light use properties are addressed. So these are the comments and feedback. And again, thank you for providing those for the overlay district. Again, we'll look at places where we can apply more flexibility. If there are any comments or feedback that pertain to the overlay district, I invite you to share them before we meet again. So that if it is possible, we'll be able to include those in the updated drafts. Again, this is a lot of work and a thank you for the commitment that you've shown trying to move this process forward. So I'll turn it over to the task force to make their comments based on the responses.
Okay.
Can you repeat that, please? The audio went out.
I didn't hear any of that. Dr. DeBose, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I think it dropped the call. Levon, Mr. Chairman, can you please repeat what you were saying?
Okay, I'm sorry. Do we need to go in order of listed, as the members listed, discussion?
Yes, we need to go through the order of the discussion based on that list.
The first person that had this present is Joyce Wright. I don't know if she's having it now or.
I'm having a hard time understanding you.
Ms. Wright, you're first up on the comments. If you would like to make those comments, if you had anything you wanted to add or include.
I'm here. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Connection.
I would just want the clarification on the LMO and the setbacks. Did I understand correctly that she said if there is no response from the LMO officials on the application that within 60 days and it's going to automatically be approved?
Is that Ms. White?
Yes.
Yes, I'm going through the list of our task force member in order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I look, not a problem. In this format, I have an order of the task force members to respond. And we each, at this particular time, have 10 minutes for our initial response. And we will be allowed to circle back to other comments. I was asking for Ms. Joyce Wright if she had any comments at this time.
I can hear you a little better now, Mr. Chairman. I did write down a couple of things as they were discussed by Dr. DeBose in terms of, but I did not put them in order. But there were a few things that kind of stuck out that I did have questions about. And I'm not really sure as to how they came in order, but there was something that was discussed in terms of a sliding scale. And I'm not sure if that was in reference to the taxes. So if so, I guess my question with that was, you know, was there a possibility of any kind of thing that could have been grandfathered in? And I know that Dr. DeBose made a comment that there could not be an exception for any kind of sliding scale. But my question was, is it possible that it could have been grandfathered in based upon years of having to deal with that particular piece of property on whatever it was assigned in terms of, you know, they were using it as commercial or if they were using it as residential or, you know, whether or not it was a compound state or not. So that was one thing that I had. The other thing that I had, that I had questions about was one being, again, about the 60 days as well as Ms. White was stating earlier. So automatically, will it drop at the 60 days? And I know that Terri Lewis stated that from the LMO process that the 60 days would not apply because the town would not sit on it for 60 days, that they would try to have a turnaround in 10 days. So just wanted to know whether or not that language would be continuous with that. The other thing is the mixed usage for the property. My question would be, what kind of accommodations has been made in reference to because of the pandemic? And I know that there were comments about whether or not someone continued to use that property as their resident and also as a working place or having that as set up for them to use as a working place. So is there any concessions because of the pandemic? Will any of that make a difference? And would any of that language, and I know that this is all new to us right now, but will that make a difference in any of the language going forward with any of these questions that we may have in terms of the overlay? Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. DeBose, would you like the staff to respond now?
I can respond to that now. The sliding scale, I think, was a question that referred to whether or not to take a piece of property and make considerations based on that property in terms of whether or not it's going to have buffers and setbacks. And the clarification here is that anytime you're dealing with regulations concerning a property, it has to be written out. It has to be approved upon. And that is just what we're going to do is we're looking at places where we can be flexible. But we can't look at a piece of property and make a decision on one piece of property that we wouldn't make for another that's in the same consideration. And in terms of the pandemic and how residents live and work in the place, it's not something that we're looking at at this moment. We're talking about the overlay. So I don't know what the regulations are currently in terms of that. I just know that in terms of the overlay district, we're looking at places where we can do a home occupation provisions for that, for just for the sake of that. But I don't know how it would relate to this current situation. And I could be wrong, but I'm sure that you're still looking at LMO regulations in its current state. And I don't know with that. I'm not sure I have the answer for that one.
Right, but I know that, I mean, that is definitely something that we need to consider because we don't know the long term of this. So, you know, it would make a difference in terms of how it would, you know, affect not just the overlay, but so many other, you know, community, people who live in our community on the island. So I think definitely we need to have some kind of Plan B backup for that if we can and some form of language that we can definitely address. We just don't know where we're going in the next six months. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's definitely something we can consider when we're looking at making the revisions.
Okay.
Okay, I will certainly save my remarks until the end when I'm in Florida. But some of the same comments I have for some of the writers already. Next I have in the order is Mr. Malik. Still with us, and if you have some questions or comments at this time.
Who did you say?
I said Ibrahim Malik.
Okay, good afternoon.
I think we've lost. Our signals are not very good. I don't know if he can come back in. But in the interest of that, I'm going to move on to the next. Please join us.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. There he is.
Are you there?
Yeah.
Are you there?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Now, I was just saying that I would have to go back to work momentarily. But I wanted to ask everybody to please look at the notes that we sent out because there's quite a few concerns that were noted in my notes that's submitted. So I would ask that the task force and the staff take a look at that and throw that into the thought processes as they are moving forward with their work. And based on the feedback that Dr. DeBose has given from last time we met about the issues that she has provided. Thank you for your work. And unfortunately, I have to go back to work. So I would ask if I may be excused because I have a situation at my job right now. May I be excused?
Thank you for coming and the comments that you provided. And we have you down for the record as being present.
Okay. Okay, so. I saw some of.
have the public record. Task force, the staff, as well as the community and on the site that corrects.
I'm sorry?
So the comments that Mr. Malik submitted are a part of the public record as well to the community as well as staff in the task force.
That would be part of the record, yes.
Very good. We will try to push on. I do apologize if we continue to have some bad connections here. Some days, as I've noticed in these virtual meetings, are better than others depending on our individual connections and certainly how many people are using these services and what's going on in the atmosphere. So again, I do apologize if we continue to have some communication challenges. I will move on now. The next name that I have on the list is Ms. Davis, Martha Davis. You have some comments, questions, input? Ms. Davis, I believe you're still muted. Can we unmute her?
She's unmuted on this end.
Okay.
But.
There you are.
Okay. All right, well, we certainly have had some technical challenges this morning, or this afternoon. I would just like to say I'm encouraged to hear that, you know, there will be some flexibility because I'm envisioning that once we really get this thing in motion, we may come upon some obstacles that we didn't envision. And it's good to know that Sharice will be available to work through some of these with us. Now, one thing I didn't hear, how will this affect Ayers' property? I think that came up in the last meeting.
Well, the thing about it is that it, the overlay district won't address Ayers' property directly. Anytime someone comes in and then, correct me if I'm wrong, for, to make development or do something with their property, it has to be in the name of the property owner of record, is that correct? Or it's going to have to be on the behalf of that person if they give written authorization for it. But we have no way on this end of telling whether or not we're working with Ayers' property. And that's something that would have to be addressed separately in terms of the recommendations because it, it doesn't go with the overlay. But it's something that we would, you know, doing the Ayers' property issue, we're going to have to, will have to work on that in its separate, in its separate form because it's a different recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Ms. Davis?
That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Teresa White, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
And you are the person that we identified earlier as owner. Just for the record, Sharice. That's what your label says on your picture.
It says I'm the owner. Oh, wow, that might be in my computer.
Yes, okay, very good. Teresa White, if you have some questions or comments, I would invite you to have those at this time.
Okay, I just had a few questions. I had to go back and re-study some of this to make sure that I put what my real concerns are in writing because it might not come through clearly enough on this for everybody to understand. But I'm concerned about some, some of the projects that have gone through the LMO in the past that have not been passed. And people's business licenses being revoked and not being able to continue the projects that they've invested thousands of dollars in. For example, Taiwan Scott on Marshland Road. His property passed all the inspections and got approved by DHEC, which is the toughest part of any business entity getting approval to open in South Carolina, but still couldn't get past the LMO even though some of the things that they, some of the objections raised by, by the LMO person were found to be discriminate, discriminatory in fact because you can go around and look and see that the measurements were off in other parts of town and businesses were allowed to open. You can see the same colors that they objected to on this building were approved in other parts of the town, including down by actual town public display that's down by McDonald's on, on the south end, so. I was just wondering if, if there's going to be a mechanism in this overlay district that would allow people to go back and address whatever concerns that LMO had in the past that would allow them to be able to open their businesses in the future and not just be stuck in limbo after spending thousands of dollars and paying for insurance and paying for business licenses and paying property taxes and not being able to use their property to generate any income.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to hear from Dr. DeBoris on that as well as Terry, I'm sorry, I can't remember her last name.
Lewis.
Yeah, yeah, Terry Lewis, who is the LMO official.
Then we respond.
I can certainly speak for what we're trying to achieve with the overlay district and just the purpose of it when staff has worked with the task force and with the recommendations that the purpose of this overlay district is so that people can utilize their property. So hopefully, what some people haven't been able to do in the past, hopefully this will work towards trying to remedy that for future. And if, if we can get there, we can move it forward and hopefully something good can come of it.
Yes, but that's not, hopefully something good to come of it is not a direct answer. I, I just want to make sure that it's directly addressed in the, whatever the government documents are for this cultural overlay district.
Yes, Ms. Lewis.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, one of the questions, or part of the question that was asked was, was somebody with an existing business or proposed business or other proposed project, would they be able to come back through under the new overlay district regulations? And they would, and, you know, be able to utilize the flexibility that's within those regulations. And so, yes, somebody will be able to come back through even if they've got an existing project on site and use whatever flexibility is being provided by these new regulations.
Okay, that's good. That's exactly what I want to know. All right. Currently, do you have a time limit on how long a stop work order can remain in effect?
Generally, a stop work order remains in effect until the issue for which the stop work order was posted is resolved.
Okay, but if you want to give a person a permit to, to do what needs to be done in order for the stop work order to be satisfied, to be lifted, then how is the person supposed to be able to open their business?
So we will work with, we will work with people to do that. So if somebody has a stop work on their, order on their property, but they need to do, they need a permit to do certain things to be able to fix the issue for which the stop work order was posted, we'll issue a permit to do that and we'll change the stop work order. We'll amend it to say it's only for, these are the things that can't be done on the property.
Okay, and if they have the already completed part of improvement to the property or constructing something on the property that they didn't have the proper permit for at the time that it was built, how, what is the mechanism for addressing that? Is there going to be a fine that they can pay and, and that, and get it lifted or what? How, how will that work?
Sure, well, typically it would depend on the project. Sometimes fines are issued, sometimes they're not. But it would be both probably myself and the building official working with the property owner to determine what sort of permits or applications they needed to submit in order to get the work approved on the property.
Okay, and that includes pending projects as well as already completed projects?
I get, I'm not sure that I understand. Does what include pending projects or already completed projects?
Working with the, with the property owner to try to resolve the situation so that they can get the business open. Does that include already existing projects that they've done? Stuff, stuff that's in progress as well?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all your questions, Ms. White?
No, but I, I have, along with Ms. Davis, I have a serious concern about Ayers' property not being directly addressed in this overlay district because the majority of the property that's still in black hands on Hilton Head Island, which is less than 1,000 acres, according to our research. The majority of that property is Ayers' property. And because it is Ayers' property and the original owner of the property has been deceased, in some cases for decades, how are you going to be able to say that we can't address the issue because the person whose name is on the deed has to be the one to complete the paperwork in order for the, for the project to move forward? Obviously, if the person has been, is dead and it's Ayers' property, 10 years has passed already and there's no hope for that person being able to be the one who can complete the paperwork. And unless somebody has the money to get the title to the property cleared, then nobody who's an heir to that property can do anything with it, from the way it sounds to me. So it has to be addressed in some way. I'm aware that there are some states in South Carolina at this point who've made a determination that if a person who lives on Ayers' property allows their property to go to the tax sale because their name is not on the deed for the property or on the tax bill, they will not be allowed to redeem that property. Even though they live there and they've been paying taxes on it for 50 years, if their name is not on the deed or on the tax bill, they can't redeem it if it goes to the tax sale. So that is a serious problem that needs to be addressed as well. So I just want to make sure that, that the Gull community families who own property will be able to do something with the property even if they don't have a clear title to it in their name. And also want to know if, if, if there's a, I know we talked at one point about having, setting up an office so that somebody from the Center for Ayers' Property Preservation could come here to meet with the families to work on getting, getting the titles to the property cleared. And I have this several meetings, so I don't know what the most recent information on that process is. But I do know that they have a, they do come and view for twice a month to meet with people here at a foundation office. So if somebody could make some space available for them for free over there, just the office space, what they do is just come in and use somebody else's office to meet with people for appointments and, and don't have to really spend any mon, it doesn't cost anybody any money because the office space is there, they just use it for a few hours, or one whole day, twice a month, and that's it. It doesn't take that much to make that happen. Nook could be one of the places that could host this. And that's probably the best place to, to do it because it's right in the, right in a centrally located place, on the north end of the island. And everybody's familiar with what they do and they've been working with the community for more than two decades now, so.
I agree with you with that, Ms. White.
I'm sorry?
I said I agree with you with that comment that you just made.
Okay. So that's, that's an easy solution to a problem right there.
Yes. Okay, you have other questions or input? We're working with a 10-minute time limit for each.
I'm sorry if I went over my 10 minutes. I will put everything else I have, any other concerns I have in writing and send it in and that way it won't take so long.
Very good. Okay, thank you for your comments. I believe next on the list, I believe the next on the list is myself. And my colleagues have already addressed a lot of the questions that I have. And let me first of all say the questions that we have are included in our long list of recommendations. I do want to applaud staff and the staff for the work that they are doing and trying to do. These are very complex matters and as we've heard so many times before, it's very challenging and difficult to work on all of them at the same time. With that said, I know that the public and the community are anxious to continue making progress. Sometimes that doesn't come fast enough. But we want to make sure that what we are doing is going to be something that is the right we're not trying to rush anything. But at the same time, we do like to see some movement and progress. And I'm pleased with the feedback that we had at this and the last meeting. I think that faces an ongoing discussion back and forth between this task force, the staff, and the community. I have a couple of questions I want to ask staff. Try to include the other observations. I have a couple of questions I want to ask staff and try to include the other observations as well.
Mr. Chairman, your audio is going out.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I do apologize. I just had a question about the consultant's report that we asked about last time and whether or not it is in fact an adopted report by the town council. And also, within our work plan that was adopted and, that was approved by town council in November, was the overlay district at that time, part of that work plan, was it approved as, in theory or as a concept? That's a question I think we've asked before. Is there anyone on staff that can answer those couple of questions for me?
The consultant report was approved by town council early fall of last year. And the work plan that includes the historic overlay district was approved by town council. The overlay district as a part of the, the framework, the work plan, that was approved.
So somewhat in theory, it has, in a concept, it has been working to, to put some meat on the bone, as we say, with the overlay district. So that consultant's report will also be posted on the town's website now.
The consultant part, I'm sorry, the consultant's report is in the process of being reconstructed. We had to get the draft watermark off of it, but it's been approved. And that will be put on the website as soon as we get that watermark off, but it has been approved by town council.
Okay, great. Thank you. A lot of these issues that have been brought up by my colleagues in this meeting, in the meeting a couple of weeks ago, are parts of my questions. Heirs' property in particular, I know is in our recommendations and that may not be where staff is focusing right now, but we know that this is something that is urgent. And we're coming up to tax season and we deal with the, these issues every year. I'm hoping that something that we do within the overlay district will help to address that issue as well as what happens with the way people use their lands. Some of the things we've talked about in the past, and I continue, encourage staff to continue to think out of the box because a lot of these properties and the way people are using them are non-conforming. A brief history, as I understand it on this island, is that folks were here and they were doing what they were doing in the way of making a living and living their life. And then there was a town that came to be. And there were regulations and rules that were imposed upon people in other neighborhoods, mostly historic neighborhoods, native island neighborhoods, if you will, that were not inside of the planned unit developments and the developments, the neighborhoods that have been formally made around the island. This has had an impact on the way some of our properties have been impacted as far as whether they are in conforming or non-conforming. Again, I encourage staff to be more flexible there and think out of the box because those are where the challenges come in. The other thing I would like to strongly suggest to our staff and our, we consider having a moratorium on citations in these historic scenarios are not inconformist with the LMO currently as it is, although they have been there for years and generations. We continue to see problems like that. I see that as something that's happened in the past, something that is happening today, and we certainly feel like that will happen in the very near future. The other part of a comment that I'd like to share was from my colleague Carolyn McVitty, who simply asked the question about heirs' property, that if the town and the county can find ways to purchase those properties without clear title, then why can't we find a way to get the titles clear so the folks that are supposed to own them can either enjoy living there or develop them or be able to use the property as well? We feel like that there should be a way around that. This may be on a county level, but I certainly hope that the town of Hilton Head would be a leader and a strong advocate in trying to solve that issue as it exists, not only in our region, but up and down the De La Gici corridor. The list of observations that Ibrahim Abdul Malik had submitted last time and this time also includes some of those questions about how people use their lands and how they will be impacted by wrong ways or setbacks and how it will decrease the value and certainly challenge the use of those particular properties. We have another item on our agenda and I want to wait till then to have that discussion on the delinquent taxes, but a lot of this is relevant to how people use their land and if not actually use their land, they're simply paying taxes on property that they can't use or they're living on property that they have a challenge with because it's, it's an heirs' property. So we hear that conversation quite a bit and I hope that that's something that will be addressed, as we already said, within the overlay district. I'm sorry, I threw my nose. One of the other issues that I would like to mention or bring up is that there has already been stated by one of my colleagues as well, that there are people who are being affected by this pandemic and certainly all of us have been affected with our income and our employment. And we just learned a couple of days ago that the town of Hilton Head had received some funds. And one of the suggestions that I'd like to make for the board is that maybe this task force and that those funds could be used to help assist people in a time like this in the pandemic to address their issues with tax, so some other legal issues. I'm not exactly sure how that money is allocated and how it's going to be used and who makes that decision, but I'm hoping that maybe some of us from this task force or in the community will have some input on how those funds can be used to help folks in this community, certainly during this pandemic.
Hey Chairman Stevens, Jennifer Ray, for the record, and I can answer the question about those funds. Those, the town receives as an entitlement community with HUD, we receive funds each year. And this year HUD said you can use your funds from this year for COVID relief and there's another pot of money from HUD for COVID relief. And so town council approved our plan to use all of those funds for, specific for helping our community, low to moderate income clientele with relief from COVID. So the way we are going to pursue that is through an agreement with the community foundation. We had a good meeting with them yesterday. They will be getting ready to open up a grant cycle. Where members of our community that meet that low to moderate income threshold can apply for grants. Or it, actually, it would be organizations most likely applying for grants to help the individuals in those neighborhoods in our community. So as soon as we get the details about the grants, we will share that with the task force. There'll be a press release. We'll get the information out and you can share it with people in the community. You know, it could be stuff like rental assistance. If somebody's having trouble with utilities and they're going to quit the moratorium on turning those off, it could help with that. It could be food. It could be all kinds of things related to relief and recovery with COVID. But more details will be coming here in the next couple of weeks about that.
And, and we as a task force, you said we'll have an opportunity to participate in some of those discussions or we'll have to wait and see what you come back with?
No, it'll be the community foundation of the Low Country. So town council said the community foundation can administer those funds on behalf of the town. So they will put out a call for applications to receive those funds as grants. So the task force and staff, we, we won't be deciding what those funds go to. The community foundation will go through an application process. But we'll let you know what that is just so that y'all can help us get the word out to people that need those funds.
Okay, thank you. That's very good. But the rest of my, the other part of my question was if we could certainly have some input as to how they, you know, draft those guidelines as to how the funds are going to be used. But I think that's very good. I do appreciate that and that does answer some of my questions in a way. That, other than some of the things that were mentioned a couple of weeks ago, as it relates to how folks are using their land and how we have access to it. I know there was a discussion about training and how companies open communication or access to information, if you will, so that we will know where those challenged areas are. And hopefully that's something that we can address before we approve developments in those places that are causing issues in our historic neighborhoods. The other part of the usage that was mentioned too, that I've received some questions from folks in the community about, about how folks are going to be able to use their property as it relates to workforce housing. That is a big topic right now, as you well know. And will our overlay district also have some allowances or flexibility for, is, is that language in there somewhere, I believe, Sharice?
There is language for workforce housing. If there's a section of the overlay district that's also in the workforce housing district, they will be able to utilize both of those, those benefits that go with it.
Okay. That's certainly an area we'll be focusing on. And I am encouraged and I'm also a little challenged at the same time that, as Ms. Lewis spoke earlier, that she being the LMO official and also having the building official involved. And I hate to assume anything, but I would encourage Dr. DeBose to not just be involved in those discussions of the process, but certainly be in somewhat of a leadership role. I believe the question that we had last time, we had a meeting, was a, who was the official? And some of the discussions that I've been privy to, certainly want to encourage Dr. DeBose and have to be in place where she can put in input on some of these challenges in our community, especially when they are non-conforming or when folks are looking to try to develop or use their property in certain ways. I'm certainly not saying that you haven't been doing that and I will certainly compliment you on some of the things that I've heard. I do not know all of what you've been involved in, but I do thank you for your work and I encourage you to continue to be a leader in that process. And also that we will, I continue to ask that as we test this overlay district, that we develop case studies. There are real people with real issues that I think we can learn from. So I would appreciate it if you were to continue to develop those case studies. And I hope that I will be able to, me as well as other folks, will be able to document those case studies such as they are so that we can learn from them going forward. I will stop my comments right there. Anyone else have any other question or input before I move on to this next item? Okay, again, I'm going to reiterate this because I think it's important. It is challenging, man, as we're used to in a room, being able to see
I hear you.
I miss, I miss all of that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you missed some good stuff, man. I'm telling you, that was.
I don't know if you have that one written down, but if you can read that back again, that would help, so.
What I, I don't know where you left off or where you got cut off, but I just said I wanted to commend Dr. DeBose on her work and encourage her to continue to be a leader in a lot of these situations and be a leader with a lot of these challenges and non-conforming properties. And also I'm happy to have my task force members on the call and in the meeting with me as we're used to seeing each other and being in a room. And this is certainly challenging trying to carry on a meeting in this format. I think that's the gist of what I said. I hope you got all of that. I do thank the task force, the staff, and the public for participating. I'm going to move on to the next item. Hopefully everybody heard what I said. If anybody can just give me an amen or yes, I did, or shake your head or wave your hand or something for me?
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item we have on our agenda is new business, and this is delinquent taxes. And I wanted to include this item on our agenda because I said earlier, I feel like it is so much related to the work that we are doing now and certainly this season. We are in coming up to delinquent taxes and we have some issues and we have some questions. Last month, when I asked Dr. DeBose for this information, she shared with me that we had approximately forty individuals in our community who were on the delinquent tax list. The community and this task force in the past couple of years has had great success in bringing awareness to those individuals just to let them know that they are on that list and also reaching out to different folks to see if there's a way that we can help them. We are coming up to that very same time again this year. And the most recent information that I received And the most recent information that I received from Dr. DeBose for the month of August now has about almost 60 members of our community on that list. So it has increased somewhat. We'd like to see that number go down. But I do know that as we draw closer to tax time and the tax sale and the tax deadline, a couple of deadlines have already passed. That's why it's a delinquent tax list. But we want to continue to bring that awareness and see if we can't bring that number down significantly. One of the other things I asked staff to look at was also the dynamics of that property or those properties. To see just how many folks are actually living on the property and how many folks have property that they simply have challenges with and they can't do anything with it as far as living on it or developing it. Or is it stuck in heirs property? Or is it stuck in a nonconforming situation? To see how we can continue to address those issues. All of these part of our discussion are part of our cultural preservation. So I thought this was very significant to have this item on our agenda. Those are my opening comments for that particular item. I'm going to go through the list and open it up for my task force members to have some input or comments. Unless Dr. DeBose, you have I'm sorry, I did skip over. You have some comments for us?
I just have some information in general about the the delinquent taxes that it's important that people need to know. In this time of COVID, we're certainly sympathetic to those who are not able to get themselves off of the list as yet. It's still August. There's still time. We don't know what is going on with individuals, but just keep in mind that this is a trying time for everyone when they're trying to balance expenses. So that list has gone out. The August amounts will be held through the 31st of August. And unfortunately, unfortunately, we are maintaining the same schedule for delinquent taxes such as the the interest that gets taxed on. And according to the website, the tax sale is on the 5th this year of October. And the last day to redeem properties, according to the information that I received is on October 8. As for the tax sale, they're still not clear about what the format is that they're using, but they're looking at sole virtual option. I will, as I get that information in terms of how they're going to do it, I will certainly share that information. And if you're contacting people on the list, please remember that this is important to maintain your social distancing. We, it's important that we keep our community safe as well as ourselves. And that's basically what I have to share in terms of the tax.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the information. I have some real concerns about how that tax sale will be formatted. Whether it's virtual or in person, because the virtual, as you see, has some challenges and this is a very important item. So I hope that we will keep in touch with how the county is going to carry that out. And maybe there's some other thoughts about delaying it or doing it another way until we can get this pandemic under control. I will start through my list to allow others to have some comments. Joyce Wright, I believe you are the first one that is here that's on the list. If you have any input or questions or comments, you made some earlier.
I'm stuck here, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any comments at this point and I may have to sign off as well.
Okay. Hey, I appreciate you making the effort to be here. I'm glad you are feeling better. And I've wanted to make sure I clear up some of the comments that I made at the last meeting when you were out and were under the weather that it was not COVID related and we're grateful for that and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Malik has already signed off as well because of his job obligations. Ms. Davis, are you still here? I see an empty chair. Ms. Martha Davis? Let me move on to Ms. White for the time being until Ms. Davis comes back to join us. Ms. White, do you have any comments or input?
Currently, I am working with some people. For, we are trying to get together some money to help as many people as we can avoid going to the tax sale and redeeming property that got sold last year. So if you have a list of people, I mean, I don't, I, I, I try to do my best to figure out which, which one of the properties in the 500 is on Hilton Head are Gullah people. But if you have a list that you know for sure are Gullah people, if you can send me that list, that would be very helpful. I know that Alex Brown and others have worked with, including Joyce have, have worked to help people in the past get their property taxes paid before the end of August. So whatever assistance I can help provide through the Panas and Family and Climate and Land Preservation Network. I'm willing to do that. We, we getting ready to burn the midnight off from now to in the redemption period. Thinking every wish we could find and get some money. But if you could send me your list of, I think you said 60 people now, that would be helpful.
I believe that was, was that shared with our task force, Sharice?
It was shared with you. I can send, certainly send the list out to the rest of the members.
Okay.
That would be awesome because I had somebody send me an email today asking well, I have several people contact me this week asking if there is somebody who needs some money to pay their taxes. They got groups of people working together to try to help as many families as they can, but they're going to send it through our organization because we have a 501(c)(3) and they can write it off on their taxes. But if you go out and redeem some property, somebody's property or pay their taxes out of your own pocket, you're going to get a tax write-off for that. But some people aren't able to write off, so it's, it's, it just depends on what, on how they want to do it. I'm open to all options.
Thank you. Is that the end of your comments?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with your organization and the work that you've done in the past several years and that's great that we have the resource of someone who's offering to assist and to help if anyone else wants to join in that effort. That we have access to from the task force in the community that Mr. DeBose, that Dr. DeBose is going to share with us strategically places those folks in what we identify as historic neighborhoods. It's probably a little bit of a challenge to tell who ones are actually Gullah people and but those of us who live around this community, we recognize the names and we know the locations of the properties. So we'll be happy to assist with that as well. And I, I had mentioned before and Dr. DeBose has already stated that the tax sale, they're working on how they're going to do that. And I, one of the things that I would just throw out there is that if they can figure out how that is going to be done and what format they're going to use. Whether or not there will be some consideration from our town officials and maybe with leadership from I'm sorry, our county officials, from our town officials to ask for some forgiveness. As folks are unemployed through this pandemic, lots of folks are losing their homes. Both with some folks in the community today that certainly have been addressed with people who are looking for places to live because they can't afford to stay where they are because they're not working. And if they're not working, it's hard for them to pay their taxes. So I, I hope that Dr. DeBose will stay on top of that and keep us informed as to how that is that is going to go with the tax sale. October the 5th was the date and can you put it up for me, please, Dr. DeBose, that you said on October the 8th?
According to the information that I got, the last day to redeem property is on the 8th. However, when I looked on the website, the tax sale is on the 5th. This tax sale is always held on that first Monday in October. So again, as you get closer, I'll provide more information that's definitive as soon as I get it.
All right. There's only a couple of us left on the, on the task force. If anybody else had comments or questions. I thank you all for being here. I continue to encourage staff to go forward with their work. I know we've got a lot of balls up in the air. We are working in the community to gather information and feedback and input. We are certainly grateful for the work that's been done, but we know there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. I wanted to thank any of the individuals of the Town Council who may be present and certainly those of my colleagues on the Planning Commission. We will need your input. We will need your support and we will certainly need your creative ideas as we continue to think out of the box and be very flexible with some of these ideas that we have going forward. Dr. DeBose, do you have anything else for us?
Just that going forward, I'd just like to talk about the process. We will be doing another meeting of the task force in late August. Either the 24 which is a Monday or the 28th, which is a or the 28th, which is a Friday, we'll look to see which one will work best both regardless of what the dates are. It'll be at 1. At this point, we'll work to present a new draft. And we're hoping we can get feedback on that in advance of the meeting, but that will be sent out. Also, the timeline would be the, the next place it would go once we make a decision on this is to LMO Committee, Planning Commission, Public Planning Committee and Town Council for first and second meetings. So I just wanted to put that timeline in out there to consider. And that's all I have.
Thank you. There is a LMO committee next week.
That's for workforce housing. We would have to set our own schedule for that once everything gets resolved on this end. We didn't get that. Can you repeat that?
I just ask if you could share the information about when that meeting is for the LMO Committee on Workforce Housing next week?
Oh. It's Tuesday, August 11th at nine o'clock for workforce housing.
Very good. Those are all related to the work that we're doing here. So I just wanted to make sure that we stay informed. The Highway 278 project is also something that we want to keep an eye on. And stay very much informed in that. It will certainly impact our island as a whole, but more particularly our historic neighborhoods. That's all I have.
Okay, if you'd like to adjourn the meeting?
Got a couple of members here.
Oh yeah, I would just like to ask before you adjourn the meeting, if Sharice, could you please send me that list like by tomorrow at the very latest?
I can do that, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, with that, I will, do I need to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, Sharice? Okay, thank you all for being here. Thank you staff. Thank you public. Thank you my task force members for being at this meeting today. Consider this meeting adjourned. Try to stay safe.